City of Stevens Point Common Council Meeting, recorded November 18, 2024.
Clerk, could we get a roll call, please?
Christiansen.
Here.
Guthrie.
Here.
Keimer.
Here.
Broderick.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Steinmetz.
Here.
Nibon.
Here.
Shuda.
Here.
Lang.
Here.
Boosie.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
And everyone who is present, please join me in our salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming out tonight on a rainy November night. Temperatures are still pretty decent, so not too bad, right? Couple of things going on. First of all, we won't have another gathering like this before Thanksgiving, so I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. That kicks off the holiday shopping season typically, so we're doing the traditional Shop Small Week. We encourage you to spend your gift dollars as local as possible this year, helping out those small businesses. They have Shop Small Saturday, and then downtown Point is doing a series of different events with passports and things like that to encourage people to check out some of the local businesses when you're looking at your gift giving this year. That brings us to a culmination on December 6th of our annual holiday parade. It's a little bit later than it has been in the past years, and they decided that the downtown businesses put the parade on, not the city. We participate, but we don't put it on, and they chose to do it at the end of the Shop Small Week just to see how it works, so they're going to do that. We have a nice tree picked out. It was donated by a wonderful friend of mine in Plover, and it's coming from Plover this year. It's a nice tree. I don't know when the team is going to be taking it down and moving it, but I'll make sure everybody knows a day or two ahead of time, so if you want to come down and see the decorating, they take great pride in that. Kenny Rozek, I think he would do it for free. As a matter of fact, when he retires, I think I'm going to ask him to do it for free. So you'll see the decorations starting to go up. They work in the overnight shift when there's less cars on the road, so the decorations will be going up soon. We got an interesting little thing that we're going to try this year with the holiday tree in addition to it, so we'll see if that works, but that comes up on December 6th. Also, campaign signs, the November election is over. I would encourage you to take down your campaign signs because the spring election is just around the corner. That starts December 1st. We'll probably be getting a whole new batch of signs. We do have some local nonpartisan offices up, the Comptroller Treasurer, Clerk, City Attorney, all of the odd-numbered Alderperson districts. I don't think you have anything in the county, do you, Stan? No, nothing in the county. So yeah, we're going to swing right back into election season, so if anybody's interested in running for any of those spots, you can contact the Clerk's office, and you can start circulating papers December 1st for the April election. I know that sounds really early, but that's how it works. And then tonight on the agenda, we also have our annual operating budget. Once that gets approved and the levy set, the Comptroller Treasurer's office will be sending out Christmas cards to everybody. You should have your 2025 tax bill on or about the middle of December, somewhere in that range, so look to that. All right, anybody, I'm sorry, item number three, persons who wish to address the mayor and council, on a specific agenda item other than a public hearing must register their request at this time. Those who wish to address the common council during a public hearing are not required to identify themselves until the public hearing is declared open by me. We do not have any public hearings on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone who wish? Which one did I miss? Oh yeah, look at that, 2024. Item number 24 is city budget. My bad, I skimmed too quickly. So if you want to speak on the budget, you do not need to register ahead of time, but if anybody else wants to speak on any of the other agenda items, Bethany had some papers you can fill out, put your name and item number on there. Is there anybody that wants to speak on an agenda item that didn't do that?
Yes.
Nathan Sandwick. All right, do you know what item you want to speak on, Nathan?
L, appointments.
Item number five, L, all right. Perfect, and we'll make note of that. And we have these. All right, we will get started. First of all, Alderperson Nibon, you said you wish to speak on a non-agenda item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity to address some extremely young Cub Scouts. I think they're called Lions when they're in kindergarten, and some fifth and sixth graders on citizenship, what it means to be a good citizen. I talked a little bit about local government, and I just wanted to tout how good scouting is for kids. Girl scouting and boy scouting are both great organizations. Teach kids a lot of great values and how to be independent and help people and be good citizens. So it was a great opportunity that I was afforded, and I wanted to thank them all again for the thank you cards that they wrote me and the pictures that they drew for me. They were very nice perks for having spent some time with some up-and-coming community members. So go scouting.
All right. And we've got Mark Hemrick.
Good evening. I'm a retired captain of the Portage County Sheriff's Office. Number one, these current council members, Nibon and Morrow, have voted to spend significant amounts, sums of money on pet projects such as the Business 51 Corridor Road Diet Plan with the goal of replacing the four-lane road with a two-lane road with space for bike lanes at a cost of $1,500,000 already spent. The cost to create the bike lanes we already have was $717,500, of which the city's share was $327,000. The original cost to the city was projected to be $86,000. The project ran $241,000 over budget, nearly three times what we were told. Who was held accountable for this gross oversight? In December 2020, a public survey was published that 79% of the respondents stated that bike lanes should not be added to the Business 51 project. 77% believe the lane reductions would have negative traffic impact, and 68% believe the pedestrian improvements be prioritized over bike lanes. On March 5th, three project plans were shown in the Portage County Gazette for the 51 corridor described as follows. The existing four-lane undivided roadway needing two more feet of pavement to meet state standards. This was and still is the least expensive option and would not require purchasing property. No bike lanes displayed. Number two, turn lane with two turns with turn lane in center more expensive than one, and roundabouts would cost $1 million more in 2021. No bike lanes displayed. Number three, four-lane with raised median, no bike lanes displayed. On March 12th, seven days later, two plans were unveiled in the Gazette, eliminating the most popular choice of four lanes with no median. Number one, a two-lane with center-turning lane and bike lanes displayed on both sides. Number two, four-lane roadway with raised median and bike lanes displayed on both sides. A recent $30,000 study by AE Comm stated four-way signal lights would be safer than a roundabout at the intersection of Fourth and Division. Despite this, Nibon, Morrow, Burr, Broderick, Keimer, and Christiansen voted in favor of the roundabout, which the mayor, Wiza, vetoed. They then voted override his veto. I am asking this council to add a binding referendum to the ballot with the choice of keeping Business 51 a four-lane roadway with traffic lights or a two-lane road diet version with bike lanes and roundabouts to determine what the citizens want and plan accordingly. I believe you can ask the Local Traffic Safety Commission to give you a free assessment of both plans. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mark Hemrick Jr.?
Good evening. Police Chief Bob Cuso said that since the roundabout at Division and North Point Drive opened in 2018, 115 collisions were recorded through 2023. This was a 150% increase from the 47 collisions in the five years preceding the roundabout. The numbers were skewed because sentry and dispatch were closed for two years due to COVID. On September 16th, 2024, my father sat at the intersection of Fourth and Division from 3:30 to 5:30 p.m. He counted 119 pedestrians, 14 bicycles on the street, and 28 bicycles on the sidewalk. Because that intersection has a traffic light, all crossings were orderly except for one bike that ran a red light. The proposed roundabout at that intersection would be more dangerous for pedestrians and bicyclists because traffic will not have to stop, and pedestrians will have to scramble to get across. I can foresee lawsuits against the city because of accidents with a roundabout at Fourth and Division when people learned that AE Comm survey concluded that signal lights are safer than roundabouts. We know that the existing bike lanes are not working. Fewer people use these bike lanes preferring safer sidewalks. Do we really want small children riding two feet from cars, buses, and trucks on Main Street, Clark, Division, or Water Street? After only a few years, the bike lane paint has become seriously degraded in places from snowplows and road repair. The proposed Business 51 plan calls for placing four-foot bike lanes on both sides. How does this help traffic flow? Proposals for two-lane roads with added bike lanes are agenda-driven by people who wish to reduce car traffic, greenhouse gas emissions, and promote taking buses and riding bicycles instead, which won't improve the traffic flow. These are the unattended consequences of road diets and roundabouts. Increased traffic congestion, delayed or blocked access for emergency response vehicles, higher rates of accidents including bicycles and pedestrians, and loss of easy access to businesses along that corridor, leading to potential business closures or relocation. The lane reduction plans will cause all of the above. It will not create a smooth flow of motor vehicles. It will not encourage more people to use bicycles and buses. Our children and elderly will be safest if they remain on the sidewalks they currently use. I, too, support a binding referendum showing two options for Business 51. A two-lane road with bike lanes, or option two, the existing four-lane road with improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Stan Pataki?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I think you all remember me as the former sheriff, retired in 2003. I am now the District 11 County Board Supervisor. I want to talk to you a little bit and give you some information that I got on the road diet on Business 51. I have heard many reasons for changing Division Street from four lanes to two lanes. Some of the reasons for safety are biker safety, pedestrian safety, and one that kind of got me calming of drivers. On September 16th from 3:30 to 5:30, I sat in a parking lot at the YMCA and observed the vehicle, pedestrian, and bicycle traffic on the intersection of Franklin and Division. Here's what I learned. Pedestrians, mostly college students, crossing east to west, not using the push-button traffic safety signal. The number was five pedestrians and three bikers. The bikers walked their bikes across the intersection. There were 65 time changes, and what I mean by time changes is the first, for example, the first one that went through was at 3:35. Another one, let's say at 3:36, one at 3:39, but there was a total of, just a second, 64 pedestrians that crossed, and there were seven bikers that crossed that intersection. They all, the bikers, all walked their bicycles across. Now, the bike riders, none of them were on the street, going in either direction. On the sidewalk, going, heading north to south, there were five bikers, and believe it or not, one motorbike was riding on the sidewalk. They were all on a sidewalk and none on the street. Because of the many, because of the heavy pedestrian traffic crossing Division Street and using the signals, traffic stop signal, vehicle traffic was backed up a long ways in each direction. As the students came across, it wasn't like one student, two would wait until they get a four or five and then cross. You would get one student, let's say at 3:36, and push the button as he's crossing. Here comes another one, and before the light goes out and stopped blinking, sort of traffic had moved, he pushed it again. There was a backup. Now, this is four lanes, four lanes in each direction, and there were times when there were, the backup on the street going south past the fire department went for like almost a block, which is, I think, ridiculous. If the fire department had to go out, they could never get out. All right, if the four lanes would change from four lanes to two lanes, the backup, because it was, as heavy as it was with the four lanes of traffic, would be doubled if there was a single lane of traffic, and for the fire department to come out or any emergency services that would need to get through the area, it'd be one heck of a time. I feel the common council should take another serious look at the situation and do some other studies as Mr. Hemrick and I have done. As a retired sheriff and a past member of the Portage County Traffic Safety Commission, I urge you to get the commission's input into this. The people on the commission are from all parts of Portage County, the city, the county, the state. DOT is in there, and I think you would get some good information. We used this to, when I was on the commission as the sheriff, anytime we had a road problem anywhere, it would come to the commission. We would study it and come up with a solution, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you, Sheriff, again, for your decades of service, and Mr. Hemrick here as well to the citizens of Portage County. Andrea?
Andrea Olson, 410 Franklin Street. I wasn't going to say anything about the Business 51, but that project has been taking and been studied for over 10 years at least because they were able to do the overpass over the train on Hoover instead of doing, finishing up that project or even really starting it. But the single-lane roundabout is very different than a two-lane roundabout. Mayor Wiza kept using a two-lane roundabout statistics and the increase in traffic accidents for, is a reason to not have a one-lane roundabout. One-lane roundabout, you are not crossing as many lanes of traffic. You're crossing two. It's proven statistically that this is a very good option there, and it does work by hospitals, by universities, by schools all over the U.S. and all over the world. You can look up statistics online for what they've been doing out towards Appleton, et cetera. But my issue there is some of the properties that are being purchased there, some problematic houses are being purchased that are rentals, except then next door to them, house that's closer to the street isn't being purchased because two of the houses right there are owned by the same person, but one closer to the street isn't being purchased or need to be purchased for some reason, which is a little bit confusing to me, but that's my concern there. Also, it was the property owners, when you get down by Church Street, that were pushing for having four lanes, keeping the four lanes versus switching to two lanes with turns, with center turn lanes, or having medians. And then at one of the meetings, somebody that was pushing really for keeping the four lanes, when Mayor Wiza mentioned that they didn't want the two lanes without mediums with turn lanes, which would be great for them, but then the median option was getting voted for instead, and they're like, oops, and telling everybody shut down with that. Talk to the business owners, see what they actually need and want, because the business owners are the ones that are renting those properties. The property owners are the ones that aren't even there. They don't see what's happening on a regular basis. Business owners know. But what I was coming up to talk about was my concern for the fire training facility and about how the fire department is sending out vehicles and what's being sent for EMS calls versus fire services calls. Ms. Guthrie was the only person that spoke up and asked some very important questions when they were asking for funding at the last meeting for the training facility. You can't go and get free money if you're a private party without a business plan, without knowing if this is going to actually bring in any money. Why is this being approved without any, like, proof that this is self-sustainable? Why aren't we looking at this, okay, well, maybe we should move over one of the other facilities near there so then some of the offices can be used, because they want a new facility for the, where all the plows and everything are stored? Why isn't that also possibly being moved over there so you can share office space, share meeting space like this? And also, why isn't this a county-type of project? Because when all, we have so many volunteer fire departments and our fire department all in this area, they're all going to be using it. Why aren't we pooling money together and working with the county to create this instead of just putting it all in the city of Stevens Point? Because it's expensive. And also, when, for the fire versus EMS, I voted no for the referendum because I see on a regular basis, okay, there's an allergic reaction to a medication. What's going out? You got a fire truck going out, you got an ambulance going out, and many times you have the SUV going out. For allergic reaction, the kid's not in a tree, you don't need the ladder truck there. Why are all three of these going out? On a regular basis, you look in Plover, Plover has a volunteer fire department. They are working just fine. They have population growing like crazy, too, and when an ambulance goes out, it's just the ambulance. They don't call in volunteer firefighters or send out the fire truck, too. In Amherst, we just encountered a situation where somebody was having a seizure. Portage County ambulance came right down the street. Amherst fire trucks didn't come, too. Those fire trucks are expensive. We paid another $1.1 million for yet another fire truck, and now we have additional personnel going on to everything. 61% of the fire calls are actually EMS assists. We should be, when we're looking at these new hiring positions, why aren't we hiring a community paramedic? Community paramedics go out to a lot of the houses that have a lot of frequent calls at them. They work with the people there to make sure they're getting their meds, preventing false stuff. Like, this is something that's been going on since early 2000. We're very, very behind on that, and there's also grants to get that training, to have those people within the fire department. So when prevention prevents calls from happening, right now, we're just throwing more money at a situation where are we just going to always have all these vehicles going out? Are they needed? Why are we not looking at hiring or paying $30,000 for a consultant? We like the $30,000 mark all the time for consultants. Why aren't we having a consultant come in, take a look at what the fire department's actually doing, and how to make stuff function better within versus just keeping, putting on more money, more staff, because now we're going to get a lot of younger staff, older staff has to train them, and you're going to get burnout from the older staff that's there. So let's, like, take another look at this.
Thank you. I'm sure the fire chief would be more than happy to meet with you and explain how the service calls run and our contract with the county and the differences between our service and what you get in Plover and Amherst. So by all means, touch base with the fire chief, and he'll be happy to go over all of that with you, as he's done for most of the alders. All right, that exhausts our non-agenda item speakers. Thank you all very much for coming. We will move on to item number five, which is the consent agenda. We have two people wishing to speak. We'll let Nathan Sandwick go first. Nathan?
Yes, good evening. Hello, I'm Nathan Sandwick. I live at 633 Portage Street in Stevens Point. Regarding the memo from Mayor Wiza on sustainability commission appointees, I'd just like to point out for the council that there is what appears to be an unfinished sentence. As written, it's unclear how many applicants there were, and I'm, just for the record, I'm happy to share that I applied, and I don't see my application mentioned at all. And it's not clear to me how many might have applied. That's all, just an observation.
All right, thank you very much. And Maxwell Johnson?
Hey, everybody. Maxwell Johnson, 2345 Jersey Street. I know you have a long agenda budget meeting ahead of you, so I'll make this quick. I'm excited to see this commission getting off the ground, and I'm happy to see all of these names on here. Some people I don't know, and I'm really excited. I looked through their applications that were on the agenda, and I'm excited for all of the people to start working on this. Looks like they have great qualifications. There is a lot that, on this committee, we can learn from our peer communities around the state. One thing that I would suggest early on with this commission, the new commissioners, is to start a baseline. I know there's already money in the pipeline for this. If we can find out where our carbon emissions are at and where our energy consumption is at as a community, we can have a really good understanding of how much work is left to be done. Again, I am excited to see these appointments pass this evening and for this work on sustainability to continue in Stevens Point. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And that is our speaker list for the consent agenda. Item number five is before you. Thoughts, comments, or a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Burr. Discussion?
I guess I just want to say I'm excited to serve on this committee, and I'm excited to see what, I guess, positive changes we're able to enact.
Great. Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Nibon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Boosie.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. I missed a few of these. Item number six is a public hearing relating to the petitioning of the Secretary of Transportation for Airport Improvement Aid. Director Lemke, I know you're hiding out in the overflow room. Did you want to introduce this at all? Anything?
Just that a few things were added from the same petition structure last month. The most notable of them is a master plan, so just getting it in there so the money we petitioned the state for is eligible for these efforts, these added efforts. You can have two at a time, it's no problem.
Okay, I will declare that public hearing open. Anyone wishing to offer testimony on the Airport Improvement Aid, step to the lectern, provide that testimony. Public hearing remains open. And for the third and final time, the public hearing is open. Giving an extra long time just in case, because this is a checkbox on our requirements, so we want to make sure that anybody from the public who might want to speak has the opportunity. Okay, seeing no one wishing to speak, I will declare that public hearing closed. Joel, we don't need action on this, correct? Mr. Mayor? Right, but, so, okay. And item number seven is the resolution petitioning the Secretary of Transportation for Airport Improvement Aid. I just didn't know if we needed to acknowledge the public hearing or anything if the meeting's going to. Moved by Lang?
Second.
Dang it, just looking away. Second by Boosie. Discussion? Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Boosie.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Nibon.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number eight is an ordinance amendment to approve the changes in Chapter 13, Section 13.28, lateral line replacement, and utilities affordability fee. Director, anything to add here?
No.
Okay. Thoughts, comments, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Moved by Guthrie.
Second.
Second by Steinmetz. Discussion? Comments from the audience? changes in Chapter 13, Section 13.28, lateral line replacement and utilities affordability fee. Director, anything to add here?
No.
Okay. Thoughts, comments, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Moved by Guthrie.
Second.
Second by Steinmetz. Discussion. Comments from the audience? Seeing, hearing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Guthrie?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Steinmetz?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Boozy?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
Boozy?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Steinmetz?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Guthrie?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number eight is an ordinance amendment to approve the changes in Chapter 13, Section 13.28, lateral line replacement and utilities affordability fee. Director, anything to add here?
No.
Okay. Thoughts, comments, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Moved by Guthrie.
Second.
Second by Steinmetz. Discussion. Comments from the audience? Seeing, hearing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Guthrie?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Steinmetz?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Guthrie?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 10 is an ordinance amendment, a request from the city of Stevens Point to amend Chapter 23, the zoning ordinance. It amends Chapter 23.04 Sub 2 for the purposes of repealing household entity plus definition and amending the definition of household entity. Two people wishing to speak. Teresa Timmerman?
Good evening. My name is Teresa Timmerman. I'm here representing Frame Memorial Presbyterian Church, 1300 Main Street, and as a resident of Stevens Point, myself, 4009 J. Court. The congregation of Frame Memorial Presbyterian Church strongly supports the proposed change to the zoning code. The new definition of household entity would be one step to ensure better housing for all. Frame Church provides space for the warming center November 1st through April 1st, so we hear firsthand about the changes of affordable of finding affordable housing. The lack of affordable housing is at a crisis level in Stevens Point and elsewhere. This cause this causes not only the obvious problem of homelessness, but also financial strain that affects the ability to afford other essentials like food and medical care. This proposal would allow a form of home share that could provide housing at a lower cost than individual or separate houses or apartments. Additionally, it makes more use of existing housing to provide more rentable units rather than depending on constructing more housing. I urge you to support this new zoning code as a practical step towards addressing housing challenges in our community.
Thank you very much. Andrea Olson?
So I have spoken on supporting ADUs and ACUs because I want housing options for people, because we need lots of options for people. I am very, very, very against the new having three unrelated people within the same household when it is not owned by one of them or maybe just owned by a direct by blood family member. And that's because I have seen what this has already been going on in my neighborhood. Within about two blocks, there are five, well, these would now be considered rooming houses, because there are investors that have bought the houses and are illegally having students in them. So we're getting student sprawl into our neighborhood. We had at the corner of Franklin and Forest, the big drug bust that happened there, that was three unrelated people living in that house that should not be in there. And when we're so concerned about housing affordability, investors already, we have over 50% of our housing in point is investor or is our rentals. So when we're suddenly allowing more investors to come in, because some say that, no, that we aren't buying any of the houses anymore because they're $200,000. No, they aren't. They still are. You can look at the property records and see which houses are being sold and who they're being sold to. And then or just look at the rentals that are coming onto the market. What we should be doing, I think, is scrapping this idea, because we even have people that have run for office that are doing this. There are, we need to take a look at our zoning and redo everything there. We need to consider, okay, you're R3, meaning that you can't have an ADU or an ACU on that lot because it's not 10,000 square feet. You can't have a duplex on your lot because it's not 10,000 square feet. Oops, you just bought a house with a lot that's 6,000 square feet, and it's had a vacancy for over a year. So the city's forcing you to convert your house into single family now. That was somebody like next door to Mayor Wiza where they bought, they got to keep their duplex because they bought that home. And the only reason why some of these people can afford it is because it's a duplex. Me, I bought my parents helped me buy my house because it was a duplex. So then I could have that additional income. But then we found out it had a vacancy for over a year, and we're forced to convert it into single family. Great. So we want affordable housing. If I could keep that as a duplex, I would have had that income coming back to me so that I could afford to own that house. That house like was talked about in the prior meetings was, okay, that house is a duplex, it's on 6,000 square foot lot. If I could keep it a duplex, you could have three people living upstairs, three people living downstairs, because with the duplex, they don't all have to be related. So also there, that investor that bought that house, they're more likely to keep it a duplex. But then when you look at investor that's buying a residential house, they're up to like $2,300 is how much they're asking for a house. That house right now has five students in it that aren't supposed to be there. But are they more likely to, if they could have three here, three here, and they're charging 800 and 800, they're going to keep that house at $2,600 renting it out versus trying to put three unrelated people into this house, which then if they're charging them now, suddenly that person in that single family house that wants to rent it, maybe it would have been 1,200 a month. Now with three students, hmm, we should really increase that to 500 each, because each of them can probably afford 500. So suddenly, that house is renting out at 1,500. So you get more investors buying more houses because it's they can make more money when they are charging for each one of those people. I've been watching this happen, which is a very frustrating thing. Like, we need to relook at our zoning. Stop forcing people to convert their duplexes into single family. Let us be able to buy a house we can afford and have some options there so that we can move to a different house. Because right now, it's hard for people. You can't find a house for less than $200,000 really unless it needs a lot of work. And those ones that are going on the market are off the market in less than 30 days. And a lot of them are either people waiting for homes for over a year or investors buying those houses again to rent them out. Like, we need some options. And changing this so that it makes it where investors can buy these houses to then rent to in rent for more, it's just not going to work. And I understand that a lot of people are for this. Make sure that somebody that's in that home actually owns that home or somebody that's related to them owns that home so that that house stays owned and residential, and we don't have more and more rooming houses in our community. Because that's what the North Side is actually turning into right now. More rooming houses, and there should be better options. Like, giving the investors that have the rooming houses for students right now, let them turn those into condos.
Thank you, Andrea. You also said that you have proof that people are violating the occupancy?
I've already reported those now for about three years.
Okay.
And nothing's been done about some of them. So this is continuing to happen.
Sure.
And you aren't even having anybody register that they are going to be renting these houses to three people.
You've turned over the proof to the Community Development Department?
Yes.
Okay. I'll follow up with them in the morning. Thank you.
I already wrote in about that online.
All right. Item number 10. Thoughts, comments, motion?
I'd move to, I guess, for discussion's sake, approval.
Okay.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Alder Lang, go ahead.
This is something that I feel like maybe a little bit of background would be necessary for the discussion on. One of the things that was the first thing that I got an opportunity to do here was to vote on this. And this comes out of a couple of different recommendations, couple of studies we've done. This isn't something that like is brand new. We've been talking about this for some years now. So you can find similar sort of discussions in our 2017 City of Stevens Point Housing Task Force. You can find us talking about this as a recommendation coming out of the February 22nd, 2023 Housing Task Force recommendations. And like, it's, actually, the recommendation is four. Four for us. Now, just for everybody to consider, like, as we try to get incremental change done in this, the recommendation after all this time that we studied it, all the public input and meetings that we had, was if we are going to go to this, we should change it to, as it said, families should be expanded to four unrelated individuals. Okay? As I heard in one of our meetings, we've already moved to a residence by square footage kind of requirement.
We've had that for a while.
Right. So like, this is, this is something we've talked about for a long time. The recommendation out of all that studies is actually four. So we've moved it from two to three for owner occupied. The motion for us is to move it to three. I would offer a amendment to that to move it to four as recommended by the studies.
Okay. So you're moving which to four?
I would move it four across the board.
Four across the board. Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Steinmetz. Okay, discussion only on the motion. The motion is to change it to four unrelated people across the board. Guthrie?
I would benefit from hearing staff's reaction to that amendment. Please and thank you.
We talked about just that today. Director Kivala?
Yeah, so staff was able to have a discussion on that. Really, what we had talked about is staff would prefer to do an incremental step. Now, would there be strong opposition to changing to four? I would not say there'd be strong. It's just the incremental step allows us to take that step, evaluate, ensure we're making the right decision, and then not going any further if it's the wrong decision. It's hard to go back. You know, not impossible, but it's harder to go back. So by taking that incremental step, starting with three, and then going to four if it's warranted, staff felt like it was the most appropriate pathway. However, open for further discussion if a different pathway is chosen.
Thank you, Director. One thing I should also point out, is that a question for the director?
No.
Okay.
I have a question for the director.
Hang on. Before we go too much further, I'm going to paraphrase for our city attorney. Because of the way this has noticed and gone through the system, if we change this number on the floor, it starts that whole process over again. So you can't approve it tonight. It would just go back and would start the cycle all over again. So it would be at least another month at best if we were to change any of the numbers. That's changing it to three and four, or four and four, or six and 12, any numbers. The city attorney has informed us that we would start the process all over again with the public hearings, planning commission, and so on. Just so everybody's aware. Now, we're going to go to Alder Christiansen, and then Alder Morrow.
Okay. I agree with the director that I think incremental approach is probably the wisest path to take. I am concerned, and I did mention this at planning commission, presently, we do have an advantage for an owner occupied situation. They they're able to have one additional person than if it's not owner occupied. And I feel strongly that that's it's advantageous to have that. I agree with an incremental approach. It's another reason why I would not support across the board change to four, because it's going to take away that the advantage for an owner occupied. So I think we do have so many properties being controlled by landlords. I would like to have that incentive for people to be able to purchase, have that one extra person, maybe make it more viable, and let them start creating some equity of their own. So I won't be supporting this, because I do want to see that advantage for owner occupied.
Alder Morrow?
He already answered my question.
Fair enough. As the director stated, we talked about this internally, if the desire is to increase the numbers, we can increase what we have tonight as presented. That's already gone through the system. If next month, or you give it six months to see if anything that, you know, that was forecasted actually does happen, with zoning change like this, we need to remember that it's you can't go backwards.
Right.
You can't say, okay, four's too many. Well, let's go back to three. Anybody that was using those four gets to keep using those four. And that's why we still have many houses that have more unrelated people than is currently allowed. It's called non-conforming use. Some people call it grandfathering, but same same general principle. So it's encouraged that you make those incremental steps, because you can't go backwards.
But my incremental step would be to add one to each of them and make it, that that will be my subsequent amendment would, and I
I'd entertain that as a amendment to my motion, like, if that's allowed.
Not for that as a, can you offer as a friendly amendment to an amendment?
I'm not going to get into that.
Okay.
We're going to act on the amendment. If you want to do another, a motion to amend, you can do that. But I want to remind you, that process starts all over again.
Yep.
Okay. So any other discussion on the amendment to do four across the board?
I have one more question for the director.
Sure.
If we were to take this process slowly, approve it as initially proposed, what kind of timeline do you think we'd be looking at in terms of evaluating it, the effectiveness, and what sort of indicators would we be looking for?
Sure, yeah. Timeline. As discussed internally with our zoning administrator, we felt as though to gain an accurate, you know, full picture, that probably two to three years would be required, to really take a strong look, try to find the appropriate metrics, but also weed out where those metrics may be inaccurate. You know, because as we look, one of the concerns was, for example, that this will encourage more rental housing. Well, renting rental housing may increase for other reasons. So we have to take a look at, you know, that metric, but also why why else did it increase? Did that have a actual correlation with this zoning code change? Or was that just the market? Was that a, you know, or did it go the other way? Because we added more multifamily housing? There are just so many elements to it. It would take a longer amount of time to really gain a true, and I will say semi-accurate, evaluation.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? The motion to amend is to make it four unrelated people across the board. If you are in favor of the amendment, you will vote yes. If you are opposed to the amendment, you will vote no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Christiansen?
No.
Guthrie?
No.
Keemer?
No.
Broderick?
No.
Burr?
No.
Steinmetz?
No.
Niebon?
No.
Shuda?
No.
Lang?
Aye.
Boozy?
No.
Morrow?
No.
Okay. The amendment fails. Back to the floor on the original motion. Alder Christiansen?
I'd like to propose an amendment to increase both those numbers by one from our present policy. So owner occupied would move to four, and non-owner occupied would move to three. So each of those would move up one from the existing policy. It would still maintain the advantage for owner occupied, and both of those would incrementally be increased by one.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I would second that.
Seconded by Lang. Alder person, I feel compelled to remind you that approving tonight's as presented
Will slow it down.
Gets it happening right away. Gets it happening right away. You're, you're approving or considering a resolution to end housing insecurity later this evening, and it does not hinder your ability to bring this back next month with that amendment.
And so the timeframe will be the same either way. We're gonna get delayed one month.
It, it would be more advantageous to helping housing insecurity if the amendment or the, uh, proposal today is passed. That one could be effective almost immediately as opposed to waiting for both of them.
And in the meantime, any, no.
I'm, I'm, I'm only pointing it out so you understand that is, in my opinion, contradictory to what we'll be discussing later tonight. There is no harm i- in your motion to add it to three and four by passing this tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Comments? Yes?
I guess I have some thoughts and perhaps a question. One of the things that I heard in Plan Commission was just the question of, you know, how many housing units is this gonna affect? How are we gonna track that? And, and I did think that those were fair questions and, and difficult ones to answer perhaps. I guess my thought in terms of how we're gonna track this, I don't really know. I mean, one thought I had is, you know, property owners need to fill out an application. That certainly adds a lot of red tape. It slows the process down, makes it more complicated, adds staff time, um, staff time and cost. So I can see how that wouldn't be something that, you know, the advocates are in favor of, the city staff are in favor of. But I guess in lieu of, you know, this being some application-type process that we can track, how will we track this, I guess?
City Attorney, are you in the overflow room? If you are, could you please come to this one? I'd like to get an opinion on what we legally can and cannot do, because those laws recently changed, uh, the last couple of years. And then I'll have the director put on the spot, and we haven't figured that out. Uh, City Attorney, could you, uh, kind of refresh our memory on what we can and cannot do in regards to rentals and registering and applications and that sort of thing?
Wait, that's what the question is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. I thought, yeah, so, um, paraphrasing Alder Keeman, if I get it wrong, by all means, correct me. Uh, she wants to know how we would track if the motion goes through to amend, three unrelated on any unit, four unrelated if it's owner occupied, how we would track which units are owner occupied and which ones are not. Would there be an application process? How would we determine how many people are allowed to live in the house? But I wanted to get your comments, because I remember the laws changed a couple of years ago in regards to what we can and can't do with rental properties and having them register and inspections and that sort of thing.
Look at whose name's on the deed and start checking IDs. So I would do it.
Okay.
So the rental registry stuff, um, there's a blast from the past. Uh, our ability to do that stuff is really limited. So basically, all you can really do is require, geez, I had to refresh my memory on this.
Yeah, I know, it was a while ago.
Yeah, what was it? Maybe like 2014 or something like that, that the legislature kind of curtailed?
I thought it was more recent, but I was gonna say 18, but-
No, it's right. It's just post that.
Could be, could be way off on that.
It's, it's very limited. It's basically like, we can require landlords to provide us with the contact info for a responsible person for the management of the property, and that's about it.
Yeah, and I remember we, we actually created a program where landlords could voluntarily submit, uh, to an inspection and get put on a list, but we couldn't require them to do it.
Yeah, I mean, so the enforcement issues with something like this are, as you might expect, exactly the same regardless of what the limits are. And, yeah, it's tricky. I mean, like, we haven't had a whole lot of enforcement cases on this over the years, and I know people get frustrated with that, but, um, you know, it's not the easiest thing to suss out. I mean, like, if somebody calls, well, I see a lot of cars there, and it's like, that's not really, uh, you know, sufficient grounds to go and, and, you know, start investigating. Um, I remember there was one, there was, uh, I believe it was the property at the corner of Clark and Michigan that has the little white fence there right by the stoplight. We had an enforcement case there, and, and it was just like, shockingly straightforward. It's like, a certain number of people were just all receiving mail there or something. I think it was literally, there was like four names just on the mailbox. So I think an inspector was able to just walk up onto the porch and be like, one, two, three, four. Okay, that's more than, what's a lot. Um, and it turns out that's who actually was living there. So, um, let me put it this way. Um, I don't think the particulars of rental registry and the methodology of enforcement for occupancy limits ought to be the driving force here. Because if somebody wants to violate the ordinance, I mean, they're like, first of all, like, somebody's likely to violate it in a, the way that they find to be the most advantageous to themselves. And likely just exceeding it by one person is probably not the way they're gonna do it. I mean, it would depend on the physical nature of the property. I mean, like, it's going to be less attractive. Like, sure, we can rent, I'm gonna try to rent out to five people, but there's only three bedrooms, or people are having to double up. Well, that's a harder sell on the market. Uh, but, yeah, I mean, like I said, it is not super easy to enforce these, but that's true regardless of what the limit is.
Okay, thank you. And just again for clarification, uh, with the motion to amend to four and three, because that's not what was presented, uh, the process starts over, so we would go back to Plan Commission, public hearings, and run through the cycle again, probably in December or January?
Uh, I'm actually not 100% certain that's required. Um, I, I wish that question would have come up earlier, so I could have done some research, not through a periscope here, but, uh-
How about, how about if you take a moment?
So- The-
The public hearing thing, the legal requirement is the one that I'm most concerned about. We, I think we mentioned the staff.
So, I think, so, so the question, like, the best way I could phrase that question is, does the city council have to conform to the verbatim language that was presented on an agenda be, for a public hearing before the Plan Commission? Like, verbatim, exactly. And I'm not so sure that's the case. The council does have to have a recommendation on an amendment to the zoning code, and there has to be a hearing and everything. But in terms of their ability to make small amendments to it, like, I, I, I can go and dig into it, but I think that there's gotta be some ability, like, 'cause, I mean, it's just, if it's, if it's that lockstep, um, I would expect that there'd be language exactly to that, uh, to that effect in the statute. And I'm not familiar with it. Um, now, how far you can deviate from, from what was presented in the form of-
Is four different than 12?
Uh, well, I mean, there could be some sort of rule of reason or something, but, uh, if you give me some time, I can probably get a more precise answer.
Why don't we allow you that? Because it looks like Chris is waiting in the hall to maybe, no, just, just observing. Um, I will have the director come up and, and, uh, give us your best estimation. I know it's putting you on the spot in regards to how we would track something like this, um, but if you could speak to, at least conceptually, how that might work. I know, it's, it's tough when you get put on the spot. You don't have these questions ahead of time, so you can at least find out and research.
Yeah, I don't know that I can give a truly accurate answer to you at this point in time. Um, again, there's a lot of legality reasons. There's a lot of, there's a lot of metrics we can look at. However, again, the true accuracy of them could be picked apart. So I, I don't have a great answer for you right now.
And, and I appreciate the honesty. I, I, I know I was asking a lot by getting you up here anyway.
Well, thanks for giving me a shot.
Alder Person Keeman, I, I'm afraid that's the best you're gonna get tonight.
Thank you, yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Alder Niebohn?
I hadn't thought about adding four to, uh, owner occupied. Um, I've been thinking more in terms of just the-
That's usually why we have all these meetings and talk about it, so these things come out.
The three across the board. But it, it is appealing to me to allow a homeowner to get a little bit of a perk. The problem is, I don't see too many homeowners putting rooms up on the market. And now I, to be honest, I don't look for a lot of rental, uh, opportunities, uh, in point. So I really don't know what the market is. There may be a few people, owners that advertise for a roommate or two. Seems to be most of those shared accommodations are gonna be rental units anyway. So, and, and a bad landlord is gonna be a bad landlord no matter what, um, no matter what the ordinance says. Uh, the ones that are gonna try to, um, cram as many people as they can and charge them as much as they can, well, the market may take care of some of that. It, it may dampen high rents, and it may, um, raise up lower rents. I don't know. Uh, I like the idea, though, that, that you've brought up with allowing the homeowner to have that extra one. I don't know if I'm ready to do that yet. I'd like to go to three, to three, give it a year and go to four owner occupied only at a later time. But, so I'm not sure where I stand right now.
You're sitting. You're sitting. We got that. A- anyone else with comments?
I have some thoughts.
Yes?
Uh, I, I guess ultimately, I think for simplicity's sake, we should approve this in current state today. I, I would personally also like to see, uh, Alder Christensen's suggestion put into practice where we have three and four. Um, I, I do think there's a benefit to maintaining that owner occupied advantage. Um, but again, this, this incremental approach, I, I think is best. We've, we've heard that affirmed by staff in previous studies, and, and certainly that's what I'm hearing in the input that I'm getting from my constituents. Um, so I, I would be supporting this in current state today with a, a strong recommendation that we do look at potentially reintroducing the owner occupied benefit in the future at a later date, following successful passing of this tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else for the first time? Alder Christensen?
My one concern is we're gonna be asking the staff to rewrite things two times in two months. And really-
It's a number, Mark.
No, 'cause we're gonna be revoking the owner occupied thing, and then we have to reinstate the owner occupied. Um, basically, with the change that's being proposed in my amendment, it's just changing the numbers.
It's a cut and paste.
By one and each. It's cut and paste. It's so clear. We're, so we're gonna be deleting an entire section, and then a month later reinstating that section with a new number. And I think, just to simplify things for staff, I'd rather have them have to make one move than two. And I, and I do still think it's, it's the incremental approach. It's, it's increasing both just by one.
Thank you. Staff? Do you have a concern doing that cut and paste?
I would defer to the staff's recog- yeah.
To Alder Christensen's point, it, it would be a little extra work.
What, what's a little extra work?
I think it begs the question, so we obviously post our codes, um, you know, online. So do you make that change? Do you make the, then repost it, and then wait for the next meeting, and then change everything back and repost it? Or do you have an interim period where you just don't, you recognize the change, but you don't change all the materials until the final decision's made? So there can be some internal discussions on how to maybe cut back on that staff time.
Okay.
It would just come at a cost of a little bit of confusion in the interim.
All right. So the city attorney is unclear if it has to go through the process all over again. Um, going under the assumption that it doesn't, and we take effect now, you still have to rewrite the, the, the numbers, right? That's, that's really all it is, is changing the numbers.
It'd just be changing up two words to-
The, the concern that I have is literally nobody with the people in this room are aware of this potential change.
It was brought up at Plan and Commission.
And denied.
Although did have some commissioners-
And what is presented to the public, the-
Agreed.
The voters of this community have no idea and no chance to weigh in on what their thoughts are on four to three, or four and three, uh, because they are not made aware of it. I would suggest, out of common courtesy to the taxpayers, that if this is your wish to make it four and three, that you just postpone action to take away the potential legal gray area. I don't know what Logan's finding, um, and maybe he'll come back in here and let us know. But that way, you at least give the citizens another month to consider it, even if we are not legally obligated to give it another month.
I can see the viewpoint. I would say, I would prefer that we, we go ahead and choose our direction, and then if we have a public hearing required, we will, we'll have a public hearing.
And if we don't, it just happens.
They know the, they know that the topic of household entity and everything was going to be discussed tonight.
And the-
Yes.
In the agenda, it says three across the board. So I, I just wanna make sure that you, as the representatives of your districts, know that and understand what you're doing.
But that's the same for every amendment that's ever been made by this group.
Except a zoning code change that isn't reversible.
Um, they're all, they're always reversible.
As we mentioned, Alder Person, I, I feel like we're getting into a debate here, and I should probably stay out of this, but you change it today, you decide next week that that was a bad idea, anybody who's doing it can still do it. There's the city attorney.
So I, I just wanna jump in on that comment. Um, it's absolutely reversible. Uh, it's just that, like you said, I mean, let's recognize, it's a pretty big difference between it's irreversible and, oh, somebody who actually takes advantage of this and starts occupying it. And even then, if somebody discontinues that level of occupancy for 12 months, then that would, it would revert back to the, whatever the current version is, so.
Okay. Were you able to find anything on what we're legally required to do?
Uh, so, certainly, there's nothing in the statute that I found that just says very clearly that any amendment to what was presented to plan, um, then has to go back to them. Now, what you do have, and I, I can just read this verbatim here. Let me pull this up real quick. So, for amendments in general to a zoning code- One moment here. Everybody bear with me. Again, like I said, this is like using a periscope to view the law.
It's impressive you're not wearing glasses.
It's good clean living, you know?
You should get a bag.
Keep your eyes on-
Something over here. Or something.
Interim's on you. Okay. "The council may adopt amendments to any, or to an existing zoning ordinance after first submitting the proposed amendments to the city plan commission, board of public land commissioners, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." And then there's some things that talk about communities with very large populations, and then there's things that talk about airports.
So, Logan, you said that amendments need to be proposed to the Plan Commission. What does that entail? Because this particular amendment-
Okay, well, let me give an example. Suppose that we had identified that there was a misspelled word.
Mm-hmm.
Would it have to go back to the Plan Commission to correct the spelling?
No, but that's not making, that's not making a significant change either.
Okay, so now we're already talking about the importance of it being significant or not.
Typographical.
So, um, and that's the thing. It's, it, a lot of times, the law doesn't give you perfect clarity. So the, the council may adopt amendments to it. It has to go to the city plan commission, uh, and then skipping the stuff about airports and 750,000-person communities. "A hearing shall be held on the proposed amendments by, at the council's option, the council, the plan commission." But we could hold the hearings here, but we don't do it that way. Uh, "The board of public land commissioners or the plan committee." "The entity holding the hearing shall consider any comments made by military commanders with bases."
We didn't have any of those.
No, we don't.
A volunteer.
It only matters if there's 200 assigned personnel, and it contains at least 2,000 acres. So, uh, "If the proposed amendments have the effect of changing the allowable use of any property, the notice shall include either a map showing this or a description of the properties." Here, it's just the entire city. Uh, "If the council does not receive recommendations in a report from the Plan Commission, uh, within 60 days, the council may hold hearings first without receiving the recommendation report." So, it's not 100% clear. It just says the council may adopt amendments, but it has to provide those to the Plan Commission first. Um, and I dug through the case law, at least what's listed on the, uh, on the statute there, and I didn't see anything that addresses this specific question. So, all that being said, sometimes giving legal advice to the council is less about me being able to tell you exactly what the law requires or does not require, and it's more about there being clarity and sort of risk mitigation. And I think in the absence of something that very clearly instructs us what to do, probably the smart thing is to do the more conservative approach, which would be to present the exact thing that you wish to act on to the Plan Commission.
Okay.
My question. I feel like there's a conflation of amendment and amendment. We're looking at amending ordinance here, correct? And that's the amendment that we are considering, you know? Then we have a amendment to, um, the amendment that we're making.
A procedural Rogers, Roberts Rules tile amendment on the floor during the debate.
Exactly. So, that's where I feel like maybe there's a little bit of confusion here. The amendment that we are discussing- amendment that we are discussing and considering is to the definition of household entity. We have that power, as I understand, as a body, to make amendments to that once it's brought forward to us. What I feel is not clear is, does that have to go back if we make any amendment whatsoever?
So--
Yeah, and that's what we were getting at. The public hearing is really the only piece that I'm concerned with, because even Plan Commission is advisory to this body. This body is the ultimate authority. But when it says that amendments to the zoning code must go through a public hearing, we had it on the three across the board. We did not have it on four.
Okay.
And that's, I don't know if it's significant enough. Is four enough? Is six enough? Is 12 enough? Or maybe that's all irrelevant and we only need that one public hearing and everybody gets it out in the open and you do what you want to do anyway. We don't know what that is. But the city attorney, I believe, is advising conservative?
Yeah, so let me approach this the way that like a law professor would. So we can all envision a situation that everyone would sort of have an instinctual objection to doing it a certain way. Like, for instance, if there was a proposed change to rezone a certain six-block area from, you know, R2 to R3, and then there's an amendment proposed by this body to, instead of change it from R2 to R3, to change it to B3, you know, like, whoa. I think everyone would say that that is of such a fundamental nature that it merits having another public hearing with all the notice provisions and all that stuff, notices that specifically it go to the people who own properties in that area. Regardless, you know, like what the mayor is saying, you know, like he was making some points about, well, what's just the right thing to do regardless of the law. But my expectation is that if somebody did file an action to challenge the validity of a zoning amendment based upon these types of principles, they would probably be making arguments that the statute creates an obligation to have that type of rule applied. Like, is it substantial enough? You know, if we were talking, like, what, on the contrary, something that I think you could make very good arguments is not substantial enough of an amendment. Suppose we were changing the minimum lot size for a duplex from, what is it, 12,000?
10,000.
10,000. Suppose we were proposing to change that from 10,000 to 8,500 square feet. And then somebody on the floor said, "Well, I'm familiar with there being quite a few lots out there that are just a little bit smaller than that, so I'm going to propose to amend that to 8,000, from 8,500 to 8,000." I think there's very good arguments that that is not, I mean, material, I suppose you could say. So it really does look like this is an area where there's not a ton of clarity, and my recommendation would be, in light of that, to proceed in the way that we know is in compliance with the law, which is to have another hearing on it if you'd like to make the changes that were proposed tonight.
Thank you. Director, something to add?
I was just going to make a comment. In past communities I have worked for, this would have been something that we would have went back for public hearing. So if that makes a difference, that's what I would have done in prior communities.
Thank you for that input. I appreciate that. So as a recommendation, if you generally want to consider the four owner occupied, three non-owner occupied, I would recommend that you don't take action on it, and we'll start that four-three next month. What you do tonight is irrelevant if that's what happens.
I stand by my amendment and I call a question.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. If you are in favor of the amendment, only the amendment, from four owner occupied to three non-owner occupied, if you're in favor of that change to the proposed amendment, vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Morrow.
No.
Boozy.
Yes.
Lang.
Yes.
Shuda.
No.
Niebohn.
No.
Steinmetz.
Yes.
Burr.
Yes.
Broderick.
No.
Keimer.
Hi.
Guthrie.
No.
Christianson.
Hi.
Six to five. The motion to amend passes. Now, back to the original ordinance as amended. So now what you are voting for is to start the process over again, and we'll go through a public hearing in, I guess it would be December if staff can get it done in time. I know it's a tremendous burden to make those changes. But if there are comments on the motion as amended, comments from the audience?
Point of clarification?
Sure.
So we had a motion to accept as written. We had an amendment to the motion to change the amendment language to three and four.
Yep.
That passed.
Yep.
So what we're voting on is whether to adopt the amended resolution tonight with the three-four language.
Correct.
That precludes taking it back to public hearing, doesn't it?
No. As the city attorney suggested, he's advising that we follow the procedure and go through a public hearing process through Plan Commission as the statute defines.
That would be like our motion to recommit.
Is it relevant to vote tonight if we're then going to public hearing? We shouldn't vote.
Yeah, that's what I mentioned.
Right.
So--
You can vote. It's not going to hurt anything. We'll just--
I believe you're correct here. The motion to pass this here would be null and void if it goes back to council. That would be a motion to recommit or to reconsider.
But not a reconsideration, because you haven't passed anything yet.
That's, I believe, the point.
The, if you pass the motion as amended today, that does not commit the zoning change. It would go through the process for the public hearing, Plan Commission, and then it would come back for final approval in--
I'm not sure if that's the correct motion, then. As a point of order, I believe the motion then would have to be to recommit to Plan Committee for consideration.
That is--
No.
That is what I had suggested, is that you just forward it back and get the staff to draw it up and like we would do with any other type of consideration.
I understand that. I understand that.
That would be the cleanest, easiest way to do it.
So that's where, I believe Alder's correct, that the motion is not in order.
I, that is correct. Thank you for helping me clarify. I don't believe it's appropriate for us to vote tonight if we are then required to--
Yeah. I agree with you. I don't know that that makes it out of order.
If we pass something and adopt it--
It's cumbersome, but there is a motion on the floor and it has to be dealt with.
Yes. Yeah.
Amendmentally wise, we don't have a choice.
Unless you withdraw the motion.
I would recommend we withdraw the motion in that case, I suppose.
I didn't make the original motion. I can't.
Who made the original motion?
Lang.
Lang. Lang made the original motion.
That's right.
You know, honestly, I gotta, I gotta say this again. These things can be less problematic on the floor if we bring it out to staff. And if that was your consideration, we should have talked about that. We could be ready and have all the questions answered and legal items found and how you're going to enforce it figured out, but--
Mr. Mayor, I mentioned this to you three weeks ago.
Yep, and you did not ask--
And you said--
You did not say anything about doing it.
And you said that would be best if that was brought up as an amendment on the floor.
Yeah, I said--
That was your recommendation.
We could consider it on the floor.
So--
And if you want to consider it and send it back for four-three--
I don't believe--
You do what you need to do.
--that's correct. I believe that passage, if it's adopted and passed here, it's adopted and passed as the motion presented. If the motion is to send it back to committee to recommit or to reconsider within committee, then that would be the motion. But I believe the motion before us here is to adopt.
It is. And your city attorney advised you to send it back and do the--
Sounded like it wasn't very clear, though. It was possible that that's the way to go around. It's possible that is the precedent outside other, in other communities that, if that was to take place. But it doesn't seem like that's black and white, that--
The advice of the city attorney suggested the conservative approach, that you send it back, go through the public hearing. And if I am wrong on that, Logan, let me know now.
Our zoning code's been in place since the '70s. This limit on number of unrelated living together has been unchanged over that whole period. I think taking an extra month to have it before Plan Commission as an insulation against any sort of possible lawsuit to enjoin the change that you would be voting to make possibly is probably time well spent.
And I would move to withdraw my motion.
You just withdraw the motion?
Withdraw the motion and reconsider it at committee. Is that what we're doing here? It's like if I withdraw the motion, it's going to go back to committee. It is a three-four for consideration, brought back next month before us for adoption?
Just a point of order to--
We don't need, yeah, we don't need to motion on that. It will, by a request, I assume we're going to get a request, to make it four-three.
Okay.
That then would have community development start the process again for Plan Commission, and then a public hearing at Plan Commission, and then consideration by council.
Then I'd leave my motion as the motion stands.
Alder Person, Lang, I'm confused.
I'm not going to withdraw my motion. Adopt the amendment with the three-four language as was--
Approved.
Okay, and you are disregarding the advice of the city attorney?
Correct.
All right, noted. Any other comments? Otherwise, we're just going to call this laborious vote.
You did ask for a member of the audience.
I didn't. We're past that, Andrea. Thank you.
But you just did.
I did that. Do you have something constructive to add? Because this has been going on for quite a while.
I do, but you just did, and then you guys got in and fixed the motion.
I did, but you weren't standing at that time.
Yes, I did. I went like that.
Okay, you may have done that, but I didn't see you stand up.
I was standing.
Fair enough. Go ahead. Three minutes.
We saw the big uproar with the ADUs and ACUs and people being all concerned that their neighborhood's going to completely change. And pretty much, there was one that came about so far, and that one, they withdrew and built on their lot next door. But you had a lot of people concerned that suddenly they were going to have these landlords bring in a ton of new people onto the property and making a disaster of everything for their neighborhood. Right now, you're voting on, pretty much, without that ADU being built, the same amount of people possibly moving into the house next door that are unrelated. And when it's less expensive, so it's less expensive for college students to not rent one of these two bedrooms that are $2,400 a month apartments, to then move into a house that's renting at $2,400 a month, let's just say, for four people, or even three people. How are those families going to find a house to live in now? Because you're going to be increasing the base rent possibly for those families. Those families, then, where are they going to live? They can't afford the $1,800 a month right now. Some of the houses are $2,400 a month. You can look at the student rentals at UWSP's site. That's how high a lot of them are, and these aren't great houses. So what are those housing options for those families that actually would like to rent a house because they're still renting, they don't have the credit to buy? We're taking away that opportunity for them, too. So this is, I don't understand why we keep doing this. I understand we need affordable housing for people, but it's, you're changing the makeup of a neighborhood by this, and you don't have any way to see if it's effective. There's no possible way to see what might be happening. Because when you can't keep track of the changes that just happened by having three unrelated, if somebody is living there, how are you going to keep track of any other changes? So this should go back and let the public know about having four unrelated in a house or three unrelated in a rental unit that a private party owns. Like, we should keep our duplexes, encourage duplexes, so that then you can have that many people in one house that's still two separate entities instead of combining them into one, because they're still there. But it should go back so that the public knows that you're changing their makeup of their neighborhood.
Thank you, Andrea. Anyone else that hasn't said anything yet?
I have to agree with Ms. Olson in that it changes the dynamic of the neighborhood, and we sat through here and heard a lot of people concerned with that, and I have seen it in another community. And it changes it dramatically.
Alder Niebohn?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, if this motion as amended passes, it still goes back to plan or it would not?
The intention is to not.
Okay.
Alder Lang, against the advice of the city attorney, is moving forward with the motion. It will not go to plan.
Okay.
And as Logan said, there's exposure risk. If there's consequences to that, we will be in a situation to deal with them when and if they come up. And they may never come up.
I would rather see this go back to Plan Commission. Speaking of as a former urban planner, I think it could significantly change a neighborhood. So I think it deserves to go back for a public hearing, not just to go forward as is. So--
Thank you.
Two cents.
Anyone else?
I guess I'll just, I'll just say I strongly support the change to go to three to four, but I would not vote in support of it tonight. It needs to go back for discussion. I would strongly urge Alder Lang to withdraw the motion tonight, so we don't have to fail it by vote, if that is what is happening.
Okay.
And I think we still need to get a final, I think Logan's kind of been asked to give an opinion on the fly if, after further review, he finds that--
Nope, that's not what's going to happen. You approve it tonight, it goes into our ordinances.
Okay.
If Logan finds out that it was bad later, we can vote to undo it. Reverse it was a bad word. But anybody that takes advantage of it will still be able to do this. Now, there, Alder Keimer, was there something else?
If the motion fails, does it go back to Plan Commission?
And that's what I was going to say. You have two options here. You pass the motion as presented against the advice of the city attorney. You can also fail the motion, and if that motion fails, this motion on the floor fails, you still have a couple of options. You can still pass the wording as it is tonight and bring something else forward next month, next year, whenever, anytime in the future. Or you can do nothing on this or motion to send it back to Plan Commission with the four-three recommendation. Those are both options. If this motion on the floor fails. Is everybody clear on that?
Thank you.
Because it's been really confusing.
Yeah, it's been--
Trying to keep it all straight in my head.
Understanding what you just said there, we're clear. I will withdraw my motion. Understanding it's going to go back. I'll take it. I'll take it off the table and draw.
Oh!
Sorry.
No, no, we're good. We're good. We're going to do this. So Lang made the motion. Who was the second?
Steinmetz.
Steinmetz, are you willing to withdraw your second?
Yes.
All right, so right now, there is no motion on the floor.
Thank you.
Let me summarize your options again. No motion on the floor. If you would like to send it back to consider the four-three, you simply just need a motion to send it back to staff recommending four occupy, owner occupied, three non-owner occupied, and we'll get staff to work on that, run it through the process again, and bring it back.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Who was the second? Lang?
I think Lang was the second. So Morrow and Lang. So the motion is to send it back through the process with four unrelated in an owner occupied residence, three unrelated in a non-owner occupied residence. Is that correct? Okay. Discussion only on that motion now.
I think that's a fantastic motion.
Wow.
Yes.
Thank you, Alder.
I'm glad we got to really talk this out.
Some days are like that. You really don't even have to talk about it. Let's just do it.
The urban planner in me is very happy with this motion. Yes.
All right. Anybody else? Anybody? Anybody? What's that?
Quit asking.
Oh, quit asking. No public comment anymore. We're done with that stuff.
What the clerk said.
All right. The motion before you is to refer back to staff recommending four unrelated owner-occupied residents and three unrelated non-owner-occupied residents. If you are in favor of that motion, vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Christiansen.
Hi.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Nivon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Four more items, and we're halfway through. Item number 11. Thank you. It was, it was a good discussion. It took us a long time to get there, but again, if there are things like this that come up, please, Alderperson, run it by staff. Talk to staff. At least give them a heads up so we can have good answers ready for you when it comes up. And you can certainly bring it up at the meeting also, just give staff a little bit of time to figure out, okay, how does this affect everything else? That would be helpful. All right, item number 11 is a request from the city of Stevens Point to establish a business park, business improvement district, and its initial operating plan, consistent with chapter, state statute, rather, 66.1109-sub-two-sub-C. This is creating another business improvement district in the Stevens Point Business Park, of course, at the request of the business park people. That consideration is before you.
I will move approval of the request.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Broderick, second? Sorry, it seems I moved my head and someone says something where I'm not looking.
We do that on purpose.
Is that what it is? All right, discussion. Comments from the audience? I see you standing, Andrea. Sorry. All right, if you're in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Nivon.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 12, and I've learned something on this item. Discussion on possible action on a clear zone and navigation easement for an unaddressed parcel bounded by State Highway 66 and an unaddressed parcel closest to Wellfield Road North. We talked about this already, and we learned that it's navigation, not avigation. What are your wishes?
I'd move approval.
Moved by Lang?
I think it's approved. I'll second.
Seconded by Christiansen. Discussion. Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 14 is ordinance amendment to approve some changes to Chapter Nine, Section 9.05, as they relate to parking.
Move approval.
Seconded.
Boozy, seconded by Burr. Discussion. Comments from the audience? Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Nivon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 15 is another ordinance amendment, Chapter Nine, 9.02 and 9.06, as they relate to speed limits and traffic signs.
I'll move approval.
Moved by Keemer.
I'll second.
Seconded by Lang. Hearing none, I'm sorry, comments from the audience? Thank you, Martin family, for coming. Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Nivon.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 16 is ordinance change to Chapter Nine, again, 9.05, as they relate to permitted parking, adding some permitted spots.
Move to approve.
Moved by Burr.
Second.
Seconded by Lang. Comments from the audience? Hearing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 17, setting Alderperson's salary for terms beginning '25 and '26. I need to point out, because it came up today, there is no recommended change for the current president of the common council salary adjustment. They get an extra $200 every year before taxes, but that is recommended to stay the same.
Move approval.
Thank you. Moved by Lang.
I'll second.
Seconded by Shuda. Discussion there.
I just want to also stress, this is not giving ourselves a raise. This is for the next election.
That is absolutely correct, Alderperson. This is not giving anyone currently sitting in this room a raise. The elections start in spring, so it'll set the term salary for the 2025 election and the 2026 election. Nobody currently sitting will benefit from this. If you're in favor, you vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call that roll, please.
Morrow.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Nivon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 18 was an amendment to this agenda. That is the preliminary resolution for the Forest Creek subdivision project. That was included in your packet. Any questions, thoughts, or emotion?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Seconded by Lang. Comments from the audience? Hearing none. Clerk, roll call, please.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 18 was an amendment to this agenda. That is the preliminary resolution for the Forest Creek subdivision project. That was included in your packet. Any questions, thoughts, or emotion?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Seconded by Lang. Discussion. Comments from the audience? Hearing none. Clerk, roll call, please.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 18 was an amendment to this agenda. That is the preliminary resolution for the Forest Creek subdivision project. That was included in your packet. Any questions, thoughts, or emotion?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Seconded by Lang. Discussion. Comments from the audience? Hearing none. Clerk, roll call, please.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 19 is a resolution to end housing insecurity and homelessness. We had two people registered to speak. Andrea? Sorry, you're standing. Also, I see you want to speak on item number 28. 28 is consideration to go into closed session.
It is, but are, the public isn't being allowed to speak on what we'd like to see or not see at all for where you're moving. And the last closed session thing that got passed very, very quickly was purchasing Chase Bank, and that was a good move, but the public wasn't, it wasn't even discussion for the public at all, which was interesting that that decision was made. Like, I'm glad that it, they don't have it anymore, but like, if you're gonna move, even consider moving city offices in there, like, it's not on the tax base.
We don't own Chase Bank yet.
Not yet.
Yeah, so, yeah, any, any of the options that the council chooses in open session, the public will absolutely have a chance to comment on, but not about going into closed session.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that that would, before discussion, or before a decision is made, or even a possible decision is made on a location, that the public gets some input to make sure that valuable property isn't staying off the tax base, because the city has a lot of downtown properties that are off the tax base that really are impacting.
Thank you. And you can certainly contact your Alderperson and then let her know your thoughts, so she could bring that stuff up. Well, it's a little late to do it in closed session today, but. Number 19, housing insecurity and homelessness.
I'm very glad that this got brought up, because this, I was told, was the first step, pretty much, in getting the city truly involved in housing affordability and security of just having a place to live. I don't agree with some of the suggestions, but I'm glad that this is finally being addressed, and I'm hoping that, because it is getting addressed now, it opens up some more opportunities for different types of funding for people to be able to buy houses or doing the lease. Elder Lang was telling me about some type of a lease program where you're able to buy your house, but then, or it's not lease, it's something else, sorry. But it was, it just opens up a lot more opportunities, and I hope that we can look very closely at the zoning codes completely and do an overhaul, since the zoning board of appeals, the people on there have strongly suggested now for many years that we need to look at our zoning code, look at minimum lot requirements, look at the real goal of what our zoning is and what we want it to be, so that we can get increased density in some areas, give housing options as people are getting older, and we do have these mixed households, too. But the biggest thing, too, we need to keep in mind is, options are good, but we also want to make sure that we aren't opening up a lot of doors for investors to keep buying up our community when it's already over 50% rentals, because that's a concern if we make it very wonderful for them to keep investing in our computer, in our community and buying up the houses. Where are we left? Because we can't really, we can sprawl and take on some more land, but.
Andrea, we're really only talking about the resolution for this item.
That's fine, I'm, I'm fine. I like, I'm glad that this was brought up, and it's a good starting point.
Thank you. And your ideas are certainly valid to bring forward to the Plan Commission or any, anybody that makes those decisions, but right now, we're only dealing with the, the resolution. Teresa?
Hello?
Thank you for taking one for the, the team and toughing it out through the, the long meeting from, on behalf of Frame Memorial.
No problem. I really appreciate all you do and all the knowledge behind this table and working for our community and looking out for everyone. So, again, I'm Teresa Tibberman. I'm here representing Frame Memorial Presbyterian Church, 1300 Main Street, and myself, a resident, 4009 J Court. The congregation of Frame Memorial Presbyterian Church is in support of the proposed resolution on ending housing insecurity and homelessness. We support the resolution because the current lack of affordable housing in Stevens Point has become a crisis like elsewhere, and we believe everyone has a right to safe, affordable, stable housing and to be treated with respect and dignity. We believe the people of Stevens Point and the city can rise to the challenge and make meaningful change by working collaboratively. Frame Memorial Presbyterian Church and I support the resolution as a first step in addressing the current housing and homelessness crisis. Thank you for your time. Please consider Frame Church a partner in the positive changes to come. Thank you.
Thank you. And you can pass it along to the congregation. We appreciate the assistance. All right, Alderperson Lang, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I would move approval.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Seconded by Broderick. Discussion. Yes, sir?
But we have, but we have others that really don't. First, in this resolution, one of the things I had was, it goes a lot into the, what the criminal justice is doing. One of the things it had was, we would put folks in jail for sharing food. That's in paragraph two. I have never known anyone at all to be put in jail for sharing any food or even at risk of, even at risk of that. I have never, and I would also like to also state, someone who has a criminal record being, being barred from, being barred from housing. I have a person this week who was released from prison, they did, they did actually get into, they did end up getting into, they did end up getting into public housing. But being part of public housing as well, there are also rules. You have to not create any more crimes, you have to not do any drugs, you have to be able to keep your house up, you can't let others squat into your house, you have to, you cannot destroy your house. And if people are not doing that, then they're going to be evicted. And when we have, when, when people come in here and say, we're, we're, we're going to put up affordable housing, we have tons of folks here not wanting that. And that's the, and that's the perception that people have, is that, okay, we allow affordable housing here, then we're, we're going to have all this crime. But that used to end up being a problem, but now housing is really taking steps to make sure that people do follow those rules. And that is, and that is helping everybody. If people don't want to follow those, those rules, people still want to commit crimes, that is a choice. And it's not against the law to be homeless. Some, one of the other factors as well was, someone is homeless, they take someone's, they take someone's, someone's homeless, they're also take their, they're also take their, they're also take their, I can't even talk now, they also take any of their kids away. I mean, that is a result. They are homeless for a reason. Just because someone is homeless does not mean someone's going to lose their children. They're losing their children for other reasons than that. And as I was also saying, our county has one of the oldest halfway houses. It is a county run house, they have, they have staff that have been there for years, experience they have is amazing. And our own police department is as well. We have a dedicated officer for mental health that works with the, that works with the mental health, mental health community and knows the people who are at risk in our city as well. Part of the, one of the, one of the things in the resolution as well said, vets are at risk. Our, the vet, the vet rep that we have here is amazing. Our veterans office is, I mean, no matter what someone does, no matter how many issues someone, someone has, the VA, the VA is there. But that person doesn't want to make, that doesn't want to make a choice in their life when they finally do want to make that change, the VA is actually there. I've seen that over and over and over again. And they, one of the other things was like folks coming out of, some folks coming out of foster care, folks coming out of juvenile care. Right, if someone's on juvenile probation, they're not homeless. If they run away from their, from their placement, that is also a choice. There are several group homes that are in the Stevens Point area and those, and those children are placed, are also placed there. Those juveniles also have a stable of caseworkers, social workers, advocates, foster, foster parents, everything. But if someone doesn't want to engage in those services, that is also, that is also a choice. I mean, our, one of the, our community is so blessed with the services that we also have. One of the things is risk for not having healthcare. Everybody can get, everybody could get Badger Care. It's free. You just have to end up signing up for it. And there are advocates, social workers, caseworkers that will help anyone do that. See, it also talks about the, the trouble of getting job training. We have vast amounts of job training here. At the FSAT programs, the federal government, they will help you get training, they will pay for it, it's free. They will, I've had several folks come out, come out, come out of prison, they are ready to make that change. And they have, and they walk into, they go into the tech, they're going to trade school for welding, pipe, pipe fitter, electrician and so on. Services are there, but you have to want that, you have to be willing to fill out the forms, you have to be willing to do the work. They're not just going to give you, they just, they just don't want to give you money. And they have job placement as well through the, through the, through the, through their department. We have the Community Corrections Employment Program. We will help you get a job. The, the department would help, will help you get work boots, it'll help you get fittings for whatever you need, protective glasses, that also helps set you up for any kind of training that you also need. But you have to try. And a lot of people are doing that, but others don't. And for the job training as well, I mean, they will give you a laptop so that you could do your online classes as well. But you have to put in the effort for, for that. And they will also, you will also get a phone. Have you seen a homeless person without a phone? Because there are programs for, for that, there's a SURA, there's VaxLink for, for that. If a homeless person loses their, their phone, they could get a new phone, no matter what. So they have the resources are there if somebody wants it. As I said, I mean, that when people are coming out of the, coming out of the institutions, there's a reentry process. Six, six months prior, we work with them so that they have housing, they could continue their mental healthcare, they could continue their drug and alcohol abuse care, they could go with their medical care so that they are not out here and they don't have, and they're not roaming our, they're not roaming the streets. And we end up working with them, we have transportation for them as well. We could get them social workers and so on, so that they have a stable of people to help them. But if they're not willing to engage into that, there's nothing that we're, that the community could really end up, could really end up doing. We also have a transition, transitional living place. Some, some people don't want it. We can't force them there. We will also put folks up in hotels for a short, for a short-term time. But the state's not going to pay for someone to let five others live there and destroy it. So the resources are there. And the vast majority of the people that I work with and people that I see take advantage of that. But there are others that just don't. And at some point, some, they do end up getting to that point where they're ready to make a change. Some people just aren't there yet. I can't stress enough the services that are out there for everybody. I mean, but they still have to like try. No one's just going to give them money. They have to show that they're going to put in the work, going to put in the, they're going to end up putting the effort. And a lot of the things that are in this resolution are blaming things that are like completely in someone else's control and are not really an issue. They're a result of other things. As I said, we talked about substance abuse, we talked about mental health problems. And that's the vast majority of what I, what I end up seeing. And our county does a tremendous job trying to hook folks up to those services. They will have a caseworker who will take them to their mental health appointment, they will take them to their medical appointment, they'll take them to wherever therapy session they have. They will pick them up and take them. But if they don't want to engage in, in that, that's, that's an issue and I understand. People have a mental health problem, one of the symptoms of having a mental health problem is not thinking you have a mental health problem. But how do you end up breaking through, through that? They also have someone who will make sure that they take their meds. But you can't force someone to take their meds. And with homelessness that we see down in our city as well, I mean, the city, the county and the state are doing a lot to try and help. The police department, they have jail, the jail, I forgot to mention, jail has a social worker. That will help anyone hook them up with the community, with whatever community services they need. They've had that, they've had that for years. They'll help them get a job, they'll help them hook up with drug and alcohol, they'll help, 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 hook them up with mental health. But they just have to engage. And some folks don't want to end up doing that. And how you solve that problem, I have no idea. I mean, we keep offering this, we keep offering this services over and over again. I know with drug and alcohol abuse, just because you go through it doesn't mean that you're cured. I understand that relapse is part of that, but you also have to try. You, I mean, and those services are there for folks if they want it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Alder Person Ling.
You can go ahead.
Nope.
All right. I really appreciate what you're saying there. It's like, it's got, there's so many factors that come into this that, it reminds me of a quote, I looked it up, it's like, I don't know, let's see if you know who said this. "Perfection is not attainable, but if we chase perfection, we can catch excellence." I know that like, ending homelessness is a very aspirational way to think about that, but like, if we don't do anything, we, we actually know what the result is. We will see homelessness continue to grow in our community, we will see the negative impacts of that continue to compound, we know what those are, crime, a increased financial burden on the people here that pay the taxes because it is a burden to respond to those things from a emergency standpoint, from a law enforcement standpoint, from our city staff administration standpoint to go through all of these, I'd say, compounding issues that are root caused at housing insecurity. I would encourage anybody who wants to learn more about this to check out the National Alliance for Ending Homelessness and learn about the Housing First Model. The Housing First Model has quite a bit of promise when it comes to addressing many of these things that you spoke to about how homelessness kind of breeds those crime, those like substance abuse issues and to, I would say, build a framework so that recovery is something that's achievable. Housing security is a big, big piece of that. This is one of these, when I was going through, why do we even need this? I'm looking at, there's a lot of old documents that have been adopted by previous councils. Why this one comes up is a recommendation out of our, hold on here, which one is it? The 2023 Housing Task Force Report. One of the things that was in there that's recommended is announce a public resolution that housing insecurity is a recurring and prevalent issue throughout Stevens Point and that the city's desire and responsibility to be an active, integral part of the solution through a resolution or some other type of action. Further down, you find recommendation, adopt a resolution that acknowledges the prevalence of housing insecurity in the city of Stevens Point. Housing insecurity is less visible than what is often described as homelessness and may require further public discussion. That's what I feel like we are doing here. We, as has been said, this is step one. That is where you find this, is this community engagement opportunities. This is a, this is a moment where we should be having those discussions, we should be engaging around these broader issues because there is no silver bullet here. This is going to take a lot of effort in a lot of different places to get a handle on. It continues to grow in our community and that's sort of why I find it is timely. We're about to go into the winter part of our season and people being outside, exposure kills people. And that's, that's the bottom line here, we will lose community members this winter because of housing insecurity. This seems to be something that goes across any place that's cold, but what are we going to do about it here is what we're talking about. We could just do nothing, we can turn a blind eye and just be like, oh, that problem really is, no one's ever going to fix it. But that's a defeatist mentality and I think that, that's what we're talking about here is, we can do something. And if we say so as a body here, we can say, we want to see city staff put that time and effort into addressing what is included in here. And if, if this does pass, I feel like this is a step closer to what we've been trying to do for some time here. It is a first step, maybe for this council, but it's a step that we're just taking forward for previous councils that have seen that this is a need, it's been a need for a while.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I guess I just got to step forward and you mentioned step one. This isn't step one, this is step 1,001. City staff has addressed it to the best of their ability to this point. All the organizations that Alder Morrell has mentioned take those steps to the best of their abilities. Is there a silver bullet? I agree, there isn't. If we've had it, San Francisco would have it, Chicago would have it, everybody would have it. We are doing a lot. And I, I'm a little taken back with this first step. And stating it on a piece of paper, I'm sure if we went to a lot of our people that work on this already, frankly, they might be offended by you basically saying that nothing's being done already. And I'm sure every day they wonder the same things, how can they get better at this and solve the problem even better? So I really not sure about putting this wordage forward for our city staff.
Thank you. Anyone else? First of all, thank you Alder Person Shuda because that is one of the things that I wanted to talk about. Two things total, but one of them, the first one being this resolution, and you've heard me say this before, when the council, this body resolves to do something, that's a promise. Passing this tonight means you agree with all of the whereas's that were copied from other documents and put into this resolution and the now therefor's. So I just want to be clear that when you approve this, it implies that you agree with it. And the second one is that, that first step because while we're sitting here talking about this, there are people out there who have been taking steps. Tiffany Mallory and her team, right now, are housing almost two dozen people, keeping them out of harm's way and the, it's not snowing yet, but it's rainy, cold, wet. Salvation Army, the Frame Memorial, the One Big Tent Groups, the Monroe House, lots of people, including your city staff, have been working on this. Is there room to do more? Absolutely, always is. But to say that this is the first step is, really implies that nobody's doing anything. And, and there are a lot of groups out there, including your city staff and hundreds of volunteers across the city that are doing things to address homelessness in our community. So I don't want people to think that staff is sitting by and letting things happen or that community members aren't stepping up and getting things done. Without those resources that are already in place, our problem would be significantly worse than it is right now. So I just want to be clear on that. And I guess any comments from the audience before we vote? Sure, why not? You were standing.
Wrong term as in first step then? It is a step where council is saying, yes, there is a problem and making every, putting it as a priority to, yes, thank you very much for doing everything you've done. Lots of staff has put time into this too, we know this, but this I view as something just, it's a technal, a technical, technical.
Technicality.
Technicality. So then it's just saying that, hey, we see this as something very, very important, we're putting it in writing. Some of the stuff in it might not be perfect as like you said, like it, it isn't perfect, but maybe it needs to be rewritten again or revised, but it is saying that, hey, we're acknowledging this, we, staff is making this a priority now, it's actually something where maybe we'll allocate some additional resources to this versus another topic that people, that might not be as important. But I view it as, it's a, it's a council taking the step to say that this is very important to our community and you guys all represent everybody, so.
Yep. And I think that's, that's very important to acknowledge that. But like I said, we're here discussing it, there are lots of groups out there actually doing things. That's important to recognize that effort. All right, if you are in favor of the resolution, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no and the clerk will call that roll.
Morrell.
Aye.
Boosie.
Aye.
Ling.
Aye.
Shuda.
No.
Niebone.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that is ruled. Item number 20 is consideration of claims, just to restate and comptroller, correct me if I'm wrong, all these claims have been recommended through committee to be denied, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Consideration of claim, USAA Casualty Insurance Company, a driver collided with a city-owned vehicle. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Motion to deny the claim.
Thank you. Motion by Broderick to deny, seconded by Christensen. Comments from the audience? Hearing none. If you are agreeable to denying the claim, you will vote yes. If you are not, you will vote no. The clerk will call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Yes.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Ling.
Aye.
Boosie.
Aye.
Morrell.
Aye.
And that claim is denied. Item number 21 is consideration of another claim, this one by Lauren Lutz, who tripped and fell on a curb. Staff recommendation and committee recommendation is to deny.
Approve to deny.
Motion to deny, is that what you said?
Approve to deny.
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Burr. Discussion there. Again, if you are in favor of denial, you will vote yes or aye. If you are opposed to that denial, you will vote nay. Clerk?
Morrell.
Aye.
Boosie.
Aye.
Ling.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Ling.
Aye.
Boosie.
Aye.
Morrell.
Aye.
And that is denied. Item number 22 is consideration of a claim, Phyllis Carlson, who had a sewer backup in her basement.
Motion to deny claim.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Seconded by Keemer.
How often do we see something like this, I guess? I've been here a while, we've had this happen.
Only when things happen.
Like rains, you know, like do we expect to see this in neighborhoods more often?
Honestly, it's, it's hit and miss. None of these things are planned, nobody plans to trip and fall on a curb, the sewer backup, I don't even know if this was related to heavy rain. But generally, your sewer isn't going to back up from heavy rain because that should go into the sanit, or the storm sewer rather than the sanitary. So they generally indicate some other sort of problem there, but honestly, that act of God doesn't hold the city responsible either. We don't control the rain or at least not a whole lot of the contributing factors relating to that, climate change. If you are in favor of denial, you will vote yes. If you are opposed to the denial, you will vote nay or no. Clerk, please call the roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that claim is denied. Item number 23 is consideration of claims from Ray Cal and Mary Mortel Ferrone for sewer backup in the basement.
Move to deny.
I'm sorry, who was that? Broderick. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Boosie. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrell.
Aye.
Boosie.
Aye.
Ling.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christensen.
So there were some actions taken at personnel that necessitated an adjustment. One was the older person salaries, the other was the shift differential for the Department of Public Works, so we did make those changes. We also needed to adjust the amount of fund balance that we apply due to compliance with the expenditure restraint program. So we reduced that by $5,000 and then backfilled that with borrowing. And then the final thing is Chief Moody and I were able to sit down last week and really kind of go over how we should be budgeting for the referendum and the new firefighters. And one of the things that we did is, since the firefighters aren't going to all start on January 1st, since that's not our expectation, we backed off the, the wages a little bit, assuming that some of them would be hired after January 1st and then budgeted some money to actually outfit those new firefighters with gear and radios. So we made some adjustments there and then we also created a separate section of the fire department budget just for the referendum hires so that we have an easy way to track the amount of money that we're spending on the nine additional firefighters, just in case there's a community expectation that we can identify exactly how much we spent in referendum money on the, the nine.
Thanks. Before I open the public hearing, are there any questions for the comptroller in regards to those changes? Okay, thank you, sir. Declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to offer testimony on all of the millions of dollars we're going to spend in 2025, absolutely everything we're spending money on, if there is anyone here wishing to talk about that, please step to the lectern. Public hearing is open. Public hearing is still open. Anyone at all in the entire city that wants to talk about anything we're spending money on for the next 365 days, step forward to the lectern. And for the third time, the public hearing is open. Seeing absolutely no one wishing to testify on the public hearing for the 2025 budget, I will declare the public hearing closed and move on to item number 25, which is a resolution adopting the budget for the city of Stevens Point for the year 2025.
I would move that we adopt the resolution for the budget for the city of Stevens Point for the year 2025.
Thank you.
Opposed.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Burr. Comments from the audience? Sure.
Actually, I'd like to thank the department directors for making do with what you've been given. I know it's been a challenge for, for all the departments and I appreciate all that, all the departments do to run as efficiently as you can, so a big thanks.
Good point, because this is the fifth straight year of a 0% operational budget increase. With cost of living going up anywhere more than zero, that's a, that's a net loss for each of your departments for the past five years. All right, if you are in favor of the resolution adopting the 2025 budget, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no and the clerk will call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Uzi.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 26 is a resolution appropriating the necessary funds for the city of Stevens Point for 2025 and levying the tax rate for the year 2024. Basically, it's granting authority to the city to le, tax people for that budget that you just approved.
I'd move approval.
Moved by Lang.
Second.
Seconded by Morrow. Discussion? Corey, what will the final tax rate be per thousand for city residents only for the city taxes?
For the city portion, it's estimated at $8.87 per thousand.
$8, thank you very much, I appreciate that. I want to remind people that when you get your tax bill for the city of Stevens Point, there are four taxing entities, five if you live on MacDill. And each of those have different rates, only one of which this body has authority over. Any other comments? Hearing none, if you're in favor, vote yes, opposed, no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Uzi.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 27 is a resolution providing for writing in of special assessments and special charges into the tax roll for 2024. Basically, that is if you have an outstanding special assessment or a special charge for some reason, that's giving the authority to the comptroller treasurer's office to add that to your tax bill.
Move to approve.
Moved by Burr.
Second.
Seconded by Morrow. Discussion there. Seeing and hearing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
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 Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 27 is a resolution providing for writing in of special assessments and special charges into the tax roll for 2024. Basically, that is if you have an outstanding special assessment or a special charge for